Twenty twenty one. At this time, I'll call it to order. Second item on the agenda is a golf update. Charles Whalen, Golf Course Manager, front and center, name and address for the record.
Handicap's a little higher than it used to be. Uh, Charles Whalen, thirty ten Autumn Lake Cove, Golf Course Manager for the City of Owensboro. So, uh, I'm here today to, uh, present a little bit about the golf courses. And then, uh, also tell you a little bit about what we do and, uh, how we've been doing. So, uh, of course, myself, like I said, I'm Charles Whalen, Golf Course Manager. PGA member since, uh, two thousand thirteen. Uh, city employee since two thousand and twelve. Uh, certified in golf course manager, management, and then also a Kentucky PGA Board Member since two thousand seventeen. A little bit about the golf courses. Ben Hawes, uh, course opened in nineteen sixty-four. Uh, the park itself opened in nineteen sixty-three, but they dedicated the course in the May of sixty-four. Uh, it was sold to the state in nineteen eighty. Uh, we re-acquired it in two thousand and ten. It's approximately two hundred ninety-seven acres. Uh, currently have, uh, three full-time employees, including myself at that location. Uh, we have, uh, twenty-four, uh, nine full-time and maintenance employees, and then, uh, we're helped out by twenty volunteers. A little bit about, uh, what we offer. It's a eighteen-hole regulation course. Uh, we have a nine-hole par-three course on location also. Uh, we also added a nine-hole foot golf course a few years ago. We have a fully functional driving range, practice green, and then also a short game practice area. Uh, Hillcrest, uh, was purchased in nineteen sixty-nine. Uh, we had been, uh, actually leasing that, I think, since fifty-four, uh, before we purchased it. It is seventy acres. Uh, we do have one full-time, uh, employee at that location, and that's the Assistant Grand Superintendent. Uh, and then we have, uh, eight, nine full-time employees with a, uh, one extra maintenance, uh, person. And then, uh, approximately twelve volunteers. Hillcrest amenities, it's a, uh, nine-hole golf course. We have an eighteen-hole foot golf course at that location also. We have a, uh, small practice green and then a chipping area also that we run some, uh, uh, camps up. A little bit about what we do with programming. Uh, we offer business league. We offer men's and senior scrambles, ladies' days, uh, PGA Junior League, junior camps, lessons. Uh, we offer quite a few outings. We average about fifty-two a year. Uh, those are listed are some of the biggest, bigger outings, like Dare, Bowe, where Mission, Harper's Hope, uh, Davis County Invitational, a few others. Uh, new revenue sources that we added in the last year or so were the fin cycles. Uh, and then also our SkyTrack Simulator. The, uh, SkyTrack Simulator is located in the, uh, Old Pro Shop. Uh, the fin cycles currently are located at Ben Hawes with the plan of two of them going to Hillcrest. Uh, last year of, uh, pandemic, we actually had a, uh, nice revenue boom. Uh, when people weren't allowed to do anything but go outside. So, uh, our revenue was up eleven percent, uh, and then our rounds were up thirteen percent. Uh, at Hillcrest, we saw, uh, similar numbers. Uh, revenue at that location was up eighteen percent, and then the rounds again were up thirteen percent. Uh, how the golf courses impact the community? Like I said earlier, we offer, uh, things for the seniors and ladies, families, high school golf, junior golf, uh, outings, and we're an economical option for the, uh, for the city. Uh, the community impact, uh, from the courses, as you can see, the, uh, seniors and ladies groups. We have a hundred and ninety-two senior pass holders at the moment. Uh, we average about eleven thousand senior rounds played at those locations. Uh, and that includes, uh, all three, the Ben Hawes, the par-three, and then also Hillcrest. Uh, family passes were up about nineteen percent last year. Uh, as far as high school golf goes, that's approximately eighty players, and it includes the eight, uh, local teams, which are the four high schools, boys and girls. Uh, junior golf, uh, we have the PGA Junior League. We have the Go Series, which runs, uh, two separate tournaments, one at Ben Hawes and then one at, uh, at Hillcrest also. They averaged, uh, combined over a hundred and sixty players for that event, or those events. Uh, and then the Owensboro Junior Golf Foundation, which used to be the first city of Owensboro, uh, we still average about a hundred and twenty-five participants a year, a little bit over. Uh, as far as junior golf goes, uh, we continue to reach over four hundred juniors per season. Uh, and we saw an uptick of twenty-three percent in junior passes sold, which was nice. Uh, and then our community impact, you know, we're economical because we offer some reasonable rates, anywhere from seven dollars to thirty-five dollars, depending on when you play and, uh, which location you play at. And then our outing revenue is, uh, fairly significant. So what's it all means for the citizens, citizens of Owensbournes? Basically, we're affordable, we're accessible, we have multiple outlets for, uh, varying abilities, which is important. Uh, we have a full-service recreational golf facilities, and we take pride in the community and what we provide for our citizens. Any questions?
Commissioner Maglan, uh, Kayak Castlin, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, I was wondering, on that foot golf, do they pay a, uh, greens fee for that also?
Yes, sir. Uh, at the, uh, par-three, they pay the same greens fee as what they would, uh, to play the, uh, the par-three course if they played golf. So, and that's, uh, ten dollars for all day. And then at, uh, Ben Hawes, they pay a, uh, greens fee, and then they also have an option of, uh, renting a golf cart if they wanted.
Okay. I, I've played at, uh, Ben Hawes several times. I've never seen anyone actually play the, the foot golf. Is it, um, utilized very much, or?
It is actually at Ben Hawes, it's utilized a lot more than Hillcrest, and it really boils down to difficulty. Now, the, uh, the, uh, foot golf at, uh, Hawes is located on the par-three, and those are the orange flags. As you drive in, you'll see the greens with the red flags, and then you'll see the orange flags off to the side. Uh, we did, uh, actually four hundred and forty-two rounds last year in foot golf, which was up fifty-seven percent over the, uh, over previous years. So it really started to do an uptick last year when people didn't have a lot of things to do, and they were looking for different things to do. And so, uh, we're hoping that, that continues as we move through this year, too.
Uh, as far as the, uh, fin cycle, uh, now those are at Ben Hawes only, is that correct?
Correct. Right now, we have six of them, uh, and the plan was to bring four in at, uh, at Ben Hawes and then take two to Hillcrest also. Currently, I've kept the six at, uh, Ben Hawes as we work out any issues with how we're gonna charge batteries and how we rent them and staff training. And then actually, they've gone out, uh, they've gone out about a hundred and twenty times since, since the, uh, first of July. So, uh, there have been times that we've rented all six out during the day. Uh, so at that point in time, I still have not transitioned those to Hillcrest.
Is there any kind of benefit to using the fin cycle over the?
There's, uh, there's not a huge benefit. It, it's enjoyment, uh, of renting a fin cycle. It's a lot, it's a lot more fun. Uh, it is a lot quicker to play because you're not driving back and forth with the golf cart with your buddy. You're each in an individual cart at that point in time, and so you're, you're going to your own golf ball. So it is quicker to play, but there again, you, you're governed as fast as the, uh, as the person in, or the group in front of you.
Right.
So, you know, yes, if you went out first, you can play in less than three hours.
Uh, as far as the, uh, cost of maintaining the fin cycles versus a golf cart, is it more expensive?
It is.
Crash them more, or?
No, actually, uh, the liability and everything is, is through the app because we do a lease program with the company. So that the, uh, individual's signing off on that. We haven't had any issues with that, uh, so far, knock on wood. Um, and it's, it's a pretty simple, there's not a lot of moving parts as far as it goes with cables. And typically in the golf carts, we have battery issues, we have cable issues, we have tire issues, things to that matter. And, and with these being new, there's not a lot of cables, there's, hasn't been any issues yet. So, most of the, uh, of the items are warranted. So, uh, we did have one battery issue that was sent back and replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mayor.
I've got a couple of questions for you, sir. Obviously, it's affordable, and the city taxpayers are subsidizing golf and all the other things that go on out there. So, does anybody, and, uh, and this might be a question for Amanda. What would it cost to bring, uh, some of that lost, some of that subsidy down each year? I get complaints from people, I play a lot of golf, and they wanting to know why they, that they should be subsidizing a golf course. And I say, well, parks aren't supposed to be, make money, so I just wonder if anybody ever considered, you know, finding a rate that could slowly be increased to where it could, I think the subsidy last year was five hundred thousand in that neighborhood?
It was, uh, five oh nine.
Huh?
Five oh nine.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, you know, it, you know, by trying to be prudent as you, we can be, you know, it's just, uh, I know everybody complains, well, if we raise the rates, nobody will come. But, uh, I'm just curious, cause there, as to what the thought process is to try and lower that subsidy, you know, to where it would be a little more palatable. And I'm not fussing at you over it, I'm just, I get the question, you know, why should I subsidize somebody to play golf at Ben Hawes?
I'll, I'll start the response to that, and I'm sure Charles will jump in at some point. Every year when we do our budget, we look at our fees. So the first thing that Charles, well, one of the first things Charles is tasked with is he looks at what is our market? So what is our competition locally? And in the region for golf, where would people drive to play? And what would those fees be, fees be if they drove to Henderson, Evansville, or any of the golf courses in Owensboro, Davis County? So we look at the comparative market to determine where our rate should be. We look at rounds played every year. Where are we trending? Are we trending up? Are we trending down? And we determine basic, basically, historically, what our rates have been, where we can move that needle. And we have moved the needle up, um, three years ago.
Yes.
And it hurt our revenues. Um, so we lowered back down just a little bit, and then we've gone back up since. So we've kind of cycled up and down every year based upon where we feel like the market can carry us to try to get the very most revenue we can get. One of our focuses right now, and one of our focuses from last year, and while we added foot golf, was we're trying to find additional ways to drive revenue to those locations. Because we feel like, yes, we will continue to look at what we need to charge those fees, uh, because it is very, i- it's kind of, it's a best guess based upon history, analytics, and, and the market, where can we move that needle? But we're also looking at how we drive additional dollars. So how can we get another dollar from a customer that comes through our door? What can we offer them that they want or need, that they might spend a few extra dollars when they come and visit us? Um, typically, that's one of the easiest things to do, is get an extra dollar out of a current customer's pocket. But another thing is what else can we offer at those locations that might drive revenue? Um, so we continue to look at that every year, Mayor, to determine what's the best, the best route to go.
Uh, city manager, something?
Yeah, I, I do, and to your, could you ask a good question about why should we subsidize someone who plays golf? And so I guess, why would it be different than someone who plays soccer, or tennis, or basketball, or hockey, or football, or any of the sports that, that we also subsidize? So, uh, I think it's important to talk about some of the programs that Charles highlighted on the, the Junior League programs, because we make golf accessible in a way that it would not otherwise be accessible to many in our community as well. So I think there's value from, from both those perspectives, from equity, uh, with other sports, because we subsidize all of the programs, as you referenced, none of the, none of our parks really make a profit, and they're not really intended to. Uh, but then, so, so all sports are, are more or less the same in that regard, and then, uh, the, the access for, um, communities that probably wouldn't have access to golf is valuable as well.
Okay. That's fine. So what golf courses are you competing against?
Um, what we look at is what's drivable area, and I don't think I can tell you what I'm competing against for each individual taxpayer, because where you play golf, Mayor, might not be exactly the same places that I might be able to play golf. And they might not necessarily be the same places that some of my other friends who have different jobs and are a different social economic status than I am, where they might be able to play golf. But what we do is we look at drivable area. So we're looking at basically two hours or less in our area. What are those public courses? And then what are those public-private courses? For instance, Windridge is a club, however, you can call and make a tee time and play there and not be a member. So we're looking at those places that someone that might be a pass holder might go and play, or someone that might play our courses. So primarily, we're looking at Owensboro, Davis County, we're looking at the Henderson area, we're looking at the Evansville area, and then we're looking at anywhere in surrounding counties. Um, there's really not too many courses that are public in the surrounding counties anymore, such as Hancock County, McLean County, Ohio County, Webster County.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Glenn, have at it.
So, the question I've got is, the future of any sport are young people, the next generation? And I think foot golf is trying to address that. But what are we doing in terms of programming to encourage younger people to take up golf and make it a, a sport that they'll spend a lifetime playing? I know my son plays, so we've got him, check the box. But I know my daughter doesn't, and there's no reason she shouldn't. So I'm just wondering, what are we doing collectively to promote that? And you're a PGA guy, so you probably know what's going on in the?
Yeah, we, uh, we do quite a bit out, out at, mostly Ben Hawes. We still offer a, uh, a week-long junior camp at Hillcrest, uh, during the, uh, summer months. But, uh, basically, eight, nine months out of the year, uh, we're teaching, uh, the Owensboro Junior Golf Foundation, uh, which is ages five all the way up to seniors in high school. The bulk of that program is five to that thirteen-year-old age group, and, uh, they're learning the fundamentals of how to play, uh, how to act at the golf course, everything with the rules and all that. We also have the PGA Junior League, which is a, uh, team-based sport, and it's, it's built around the little league model. Uh, and so we take our, uh, Ben Hawes, our City of Owensboro team, and we compete against the teams, two teams from the Owensboro Country Club, uh, the bridges over at Henderson, Pearl Club had two teams. Uh, and then, um, I think, yeah, Owensboro had two teams, so there was five of us. So when we compete against them, and then they have an all-star competition also. So, uh, and then on top of that, we also do individual lessons. So there's an extensive lesson program from four kids and all the way into adults, and trying to get people into the game, because that's, that's the key. It, it's not going out and unfortunately teaching somebody that's sixty how to play the game. It's teaching somebody that's fifteen and gonna come out of the workforce and want a hobby to do, because you can't play football all your life, you have a hard time playing basketball and so on. So on that side of it, yes, that, that is a large target for the PGA, it's a very large target for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Charles, here we go. Um, years ago, we had looked at doing something with the, uh, Old Pro Shop, maybe restaurant, and it, have y'all tried that at some point, or?
We, we did try that. Uh, it's, there's a zoning issue, and I, I don't. Is zoning the proper word for it? Is it a? Yeah, it's the ADA accessibility. Uh, and then, so what we figured out on that side of it was to be able to do a restaurant or anything in that, it'd be cheaper to tear the building down and rebuild it. Versus trying to bring it up to code, because it, it is such an old building. Uh, but what we have done is, uh, we do, uh, we do a grill out of, on the side, uh, for a special event. Uh, and then we also have our, that SkyTrack, uh, simulator. So in the back room, we, uh, we have a, a simulator. It's a small functioning, but you can rent it for twenty-five dollars an hour and, and hit range balls in it, and it'll tell you all your great numbers and how you're doing and things like that. And so, we do have people that come out and do that during the winter. We added that, uh, just, just early last year.
I was just trying to think about ideas to encapsulate more dollars while people are there.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Hey, thanks, sir.
Thank you all.
Next item on my agenda is police officer training. Sergeant Courtney Arrington, Owensboro Police Department.
All right. As you said, I'm Sergeant Courtney Arrington with the Owensboro Police Department to, to speak to you all about our training unit. So our training occurs in three different phases. We train officers prior to going to the academy, they receive academy training, and then after they return from the academy, we have continuing education for the length of their careers. So I started with just what do we have to do to get officers to the academy? We have them for three weeks, sometimes four to five weeks. What all are we training them in? So initially, we have those mandated courses, health and safety, things that are required for city employment. We also teach them on all of our policies and procedures, ensuring that they know everything that's expected of them, not just within the department, but also within the City of Owensboro. They're also TASER certified. They have a eight-hour vehicle operations training, driver's training, that they're certified in. We have radar certification. All of our officers receive CPR certification before they go to the police academy, it's mandated. They also spend time out of our firing range, making sure that they, um, are certified in firing, but also making sure they have the skills needed, so that when they get to the police academy, there's not an issue with them being able to qualify. We also provide defensive tactics training. There's required FEMA courses by the academy standards, one hundred, two hundred, and seven hundred. We also require eight hundred within our departments. We make them take that prior to going as well. And then lastly, we make sure that they're going to be able to pass the police officer professional standards or POPS testing. We prepare them daily, they have time to work out, to ensure they're gonna beat those standards when they go into the academy. Then they go to the police academy. While they're there, they're there for twenty weeks of training, which adds up to eight hundred and twenty-four hours of training. And as you can see, there's a myriad of topics that they receive, from patrol procedures and what's expected of them in traffic stops, physical training and defensive tactics, to make sure they can defend themselves appropriately, but also make sure they're using only the force necessary. They have traffic and DUI training, firearms, criminal investigations, and responses to crisis situations. When they return to us, they go through the police training officer program, where they spend seventeen weeks with a police training officer or PTO, teaching them what we need them to do to be successful as a police officer in Owensboro, Kentucky. So they proceed from phase A all the way to phase D, with each of those being three to four weeks. In that timeframe, they also are evaluated each time to move to the next phase. If they're not up to what we need them to be, then they could receive additional training to ensure that they are ready. Lastly, they have a week for a final evaluation. At that time, their training officer is with them, but basically in an invisible status. I need to see, can you do your job if we weren't here? They're evaluated then and either passed to go out of solo patrol, or at that time, they're told, we're gonna give you additional training to get you where we need you to be. And then lastly, they complete a neighborhood portfolio exercise, which not only helps them get out in the community and learn that sector of town, meet business owners, what schools are in there, what hazmat areas, what things do they need to know are special about that area of town? But also to help introduce them to the community, because when they're done, they come back and present that to our roll call for their shift. So now officers on their shift are learning, hey, is there a new business owner in that area? Is there something new that we need to know? Is there a problem in that area of town that the business owner told them that we need to address? So they're able to get that information. Um, each time a new recruit class comes out, we're doing that to continue to build that community relationship. Ultimately, if all of those pieces are completed, then they would return to the patrol division for solo patrol. And then annually, what are officers need to do to stay certified? Because ultimately, we want to keep them in this career until they retire. So first and foremost, we have a forty-hour mandated training that we receive either through the Department of Criminal Justice Training, or through another KLEC-approved course. We also have firearm qualification, every officer's mandated to do that. By Kentucky statute, we would be mandated for once a year, but our department does twice a year, in the spring and in the fall. We also have vehicle operations training yearly for officers and TASER recertification. Also, we do a lot of internal training. We call them roll call trainings, monthly trainings of any new trend, anything that I need to update them on, some new program that has come out. We also make sure that yearly they do policy updates, those core policies, things that we need to make sure that they don't forget. Every single year, we're making sure that they have that information. We also alternate years with active shooter response and defensive tactics training. Every year, we have the use-of-force simulator training that comes in to help them make those split second, second decisions. And then ultimately, um, there's mandated online courses that are required through the Department of Criminal Justice to have, such as breath test recertification, some of those things that expire every two years that we need to make sure that we are up on. And lastly, CPR training, of course, gets done every two years. Our specialized units also train. Here's a list, a myriad, a list of all the different units that we have, and each of them trains on a different amount. Some train monthly, some may train quarterly, some twice a month, it depends on the unit. So you can see, for example, emergency response team, in two thousand twenty, they had two thousand ninety-six hours of training, versus your crisis negotiation unit has a hundred and four, drone training has a hundred and forty-four hours, et cetera. Also, within the department, we have built-in training days. On Thursdays and Fridays, our patrol shifts have more officers on those shifts than any other day, and that's to help us with those mandated online trainings or in-house training, to he, keep manpower shortages from occurring in patrol. Because if I have an officer who needs to do an eight-hour course, then he's gonna have to complete that while he's at work. This helps prevent some of those issues. We also are definitely training at a higher standard than is required by the state statutes. As we said earlier, we qualify twice a year with firearms versus once that's mandated. And lastly, as an agency, we're always looking and on the forefront of what are some additional training opportunities that we can have for our officers? So some of the upcoming things that we're looking into are crowd control training, for officers to receive training and how to respond to, um, mass crowds, and being able to control those with the least amount of force possible. And then lastly, tactical combat casualty care, or T-triple-C, training, to help officers have lifesaving techniques, um, to be able to help wounded in crisis situations. And then, there's our contact information, if you need anything from me.
Sergeant, uh, what's it cost to get, uh, from start to finish, to get them in a, in a squad, in a patrol car?
I'm gonna leave it to the chief.
Can we say that? Do I?
Well, Art Elam, Chief of Police, to, to break it that down, I mean, we don't have it broken down to, from hire date to going to the academy, because it varies from the time we bring them in. We've had officers that were with OPD prior to going to the training academy for, you know, in excess of three months. So that would differ from somebody that was there three months, or three weeks. Um, we know that from start, starting the academy, the iron process, and then completion for their first year, it's about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. That's equipment and training hours and money paid to the officer, so.
That's what I was getting at.
Very expensive.
Okay.
And if you add up those time blocks, like you referenced, forty hours, or, uh, excuse me, twenty weeks, seventeen weeks, I mean, it's basically, what, eleven months typically?
And a hundred thousand dollars is what I use, just over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Commissioner Glenn?
Uh, thank you. So, where are the academy locations?
Current, currently, we send them to Richmond, that's the only training academy for.
So there's only one in the area? Do, do they, so they spend about twenty weeks?
Yes, sir.
Is that, uh, you know, consistent? Are they there the whole time? They come home? How does that work?
They would be there every week for twenty weeks, other than the breaks that the academy has. So for Christmas and New Year's, they're gonna take a two-week break, that they'll be back at the agency, and we provide them additional training during that time. So for the recruits coming back for Thanksgiving, I have them scheduled for defensive tactics training during that week that they would be missing from the academy. So it is twenty weeks full-time in Richmond, but unfortunately, if there's holidays during that, there is a break. Yes, sir.
It's, it sounds like to me, we could use some other locations, or at least one closer.
Yes, sir.
Is there a waiting list for the?
Commissioner Castlin, go ahead. I didn't know if it was that. Uh, yeah, thank you.
Is there a waiting, is there a waiting list for the, uh, academy, uh, as far as getting people in once they apply?
Yes, a- all the academy dates up until March are currently filled. We have three officers that we will be interviewing this coming Monday, but I'll make some phone calls to see if we might be bumped up on that list to get our people in. And, and I've had great success in doing that, just because of the relationships that we have here with, uh, the Department of Criminal Justice and people there, so.
Uh, one more question. You, you've said something about a use-of-force simulator. Uh, is that located here, or is it?
That is brought in yearly through, um, a relationship with Kentucky League of Cities. So they bring that simulator in and set it up, and we take every officer through that during the month that we have it. Yes, sir.
Of course, Commissioner Castlin, we are in the process of putting our own classroom, uh, building out of our range, and the goal is to have a use-of-force simulator that we will purchase, to put out at that facility, to train our people, uh, consistently throughout the year, so.
Uh, two questions I have that, that, Chief, you may wanna be close to the mic, cause I got a feeling, uh, Sergeant. a feeling Sergeant, you're going to want to answer these. The first is body camps. A long time ago, we talked about trying to get grants to pay for those. Where are we at in that process or are we, have we abandoned that process?
Great question. We, you all approved body camps to be funded in this past budget. We have them ordered. We expect them to be in in a couple of months. So we will equip all officers with body cameras. Of course, right now, we're in the middle of a CAD and RMS project, which will roll out next week, so we've got a lot of different things going on, a classroom at the range and such, but it'd be in our immediate future, so.
And the other question, I think Sergeant, you'll be fine with this, is a lot of the discussion in the last year was about teaching new officers to de-escalate. So some of the training you're doing clearly works with that, which just a couple specifically fall into the heading of teaching de-escalation techniques to our new officers.
Yes, absolutely. We, not only do we have actually training called de-escalation training that we just did in 2020 and ultimately in 21 will complete, but we also do crisis intervention training. Every brand-new officer receives that training. So all the officers, once they graduate the academy, the very next time period for that 40-hour class, that's what we're sending them to so that they can deal with not only people who may be in mental crisis, but also just people in general who they need to de-escalate and move down to where they're able to handle them with the least amount of force possible.
Yeah, it really is about managing people. You all do a great job.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your great work and the chief's. Thanks again.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, back to you.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just going to add an additional comment to Chief's notes about the body cameras as you referenced. So Chief was correct, they were included in the budget that the Commission approved for the current year. And so as we've planned out work sessions over the next few months, that's on our list as well. So once those body cameras are here and implemented by the staff, then we'll have somebody come in and demo the body cameras for you and then walk you through what the policies are and procedures for how those are used. So maybe sometime probably early next year, you know, late winter or early spring, if I had to guess.
Thank you. And storage is a big cost in this thing, is not so much the cameras. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. Very good observation. They do make a lot of data. We rolled these out when I had the equivalent job in Hopkinsville, and it was a sizable task figuring out how to store the data because, again, they run a lot of hours. So they accumulate a lot of footage and a lot of data, and then they're also quite a challenge from an open records request as well, because if you get a record request specific to an incident or a report, then there's sometimes can be hours and hours and hours of data. So if you think of, you know, a large event with multiple officers on scene where they're there for several hours, then you can get 20, 30 hours of footage from one particular incident. So it is, you know, there's a lot of value to them, but there's a lot of work with them as well.
Sergeant, do you offer that crisis training to elected officials or is it just you have to be in the police department?
We haven't in the past, no, sir.
Just thought, well, you might generate some revenue.
Give you some. Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Okay. Jeff, did you have something? Thank you all so much. You know how much we appreciate you and try and do everything we can to support you, so thank you very much for your service.
We appreciate you as well, sir.
Ho, 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 holiday events.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commission. Tim Ross, Public Events Director, wanted to update the group on some of the plans that we've got for the holiday season. We've been working a year and a half, two years ago to try to start to create some more energy downtown and kind of revitalize a little bit of the holiday season. The community's done a great job for numerous things throughout the year as we've developed the riverfront, and so we wanted to shift that towards the holidays. And so we've been working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau for quite some time on it, and unfortunately, before COVID ever we knew what it was, we had these plans in place, so a lot of them, and then that got railroaded. So we put it on the shelf just a little bit, and, but we've been working diligently over the last few months to bring that together, to revitalize the holidays. And so we've got those 12 Days of Christmas activities that we've got planned for the community to enjoy the Christmas season on the riverfront, and it essentially involves, obviously, 12 days, the weekend from Thanksgiving all the way up until Christmas. And so each year, we've got different activities happening every day to celebrate those 12 Days of Christmas leading up to the holidays. So we're excited to give you some of the basic information about that today and let the folks know where they can get more details about it. A lot of good partners with it. There's so many things that happen on the riverfront throughout the holiday season, and they have been happening for years. And so this is an effort to add a few more and then to coordinate those pieces so everybody knows what's taking place. So that first weekend, Thanksgiving weekend, on Friday after Thanksgiving, will be the launch of the Energy on Ice and their grand opening. Many people are familiar with that. Great partnership with Atmos and Southern Star and Boardwalk that came on board about a year ago to provide the funding to buy that artificial ice rink that will be out on the Kentucky Legend Pier behind the Convention Center. So they've got a great plan for that with a lot of Christmas lighting and space heaters and benches and seats and music to make it a pretty festive atmosphere for the holidays there. And then the Holiday Inn is also doing, partnered with Friday After Five for their Christmas edition of live music there every Friday night for those four weekends leading up to it. And then the next day, Saturday, Chambers Shop Owensboro's got theirs for Independence Bank that they do every year, and then Energy on Ice that night. On Sunday night is doing movie nights each Sunday, so they'll show Elf on a big screen there while you're skating and enjoying the ice rink. You can watch a movie as well. Then the next weekend, the Third, Fourth, and Fifth, we've got Holiday Family Photo Night, and so Wonder Boy Media is going to be down there and have a couple of locations set up along the riverfront so folks don't have to try to figure out the lighting to get the bridge lights with all the Christmas colors in the background and try to get your selfie with that. Wonder Boy Media will be there to take those photos, and they've got a couple of stations that they'll be set up so you could go down with your family, grab your pictures, scan the QR code that they give you and be able to grab those. Convention Center's got a Holiday Market that's happening, Energy on Ice again, and then the Friday After Five at the Holiday Inn. Saturday is a big day, December 4th. Traditionally, that first Saturday in December is always slammed with activities, so Carenet's got their run. Holiday Stroll is the, happening that day with the retailers downtown. At 5 o'clock that evening, we do the annual Christmas tree lighting with the mayor and the commissioner typically there with, the youth corral is always there to join in that. And then we've got something new this year, is kind of the other anchor of the downtown activities. So you have Energy on Ice every night, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Then we have something new this year called Dancing Lights. And so Big Rivers Electric and Green River Distilling stepped up in a big way for us to make this possible, and we're kind of transformed the area there by the fountains and Smothers Park. So between the concession building and through the fountains there will be lit up more than it ever has with Christmas lights in the trees, uplighting, trellises, things like that will all be lit. And then every 15 minutes from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, they will be choreographed to different classic Christmas songs that everybody knows and enjoys. So the bridge and then all the Christmas lights in that city block will all be dancing to your favorite Christmas songs, and you can enjoy a different song every 15 minutes from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So thank you to Big Rivers and Green River to add that element to us. So between the Energy on Ice by the Convention Center and then this kind of in the center spot of Smothers Park will be activities that'll entertain folks, whether or not it's before going to a show, after a show, or just coming down to enjoy something at one of the restaurants downtown, you can enjoy the holiday season as well on those for each weekend. And then the Nutcrackers happening, Lena Brothers Jamboree, and then, you know, the Holiday Market is at the Convention Center, then Energy on Ice. Nutcracker's another one. Everybody knows that weekend. So that's just a listing of things happening that day. And then the very next weekend, Hot Chocolate Hop was something we started last year. The downtown restaurants said it was a big hit, and several of them sold out of their specialty hot chocolate drinks that night. So you can enjoy your special hot chocolate drinks on that Friday evening before or after your meals downtown. And then Dancing Lights, Energy, you can see the things that are on there. Saturday, the 11th, Convention Center does Breakfast with Santa. They've been doing it for several years and enjoy doing that with the families and the kiddos that Saturday morning. And then you can see the other things. Symphony's got their Home for the Holiday Show, and then you've got Dancing Lights and, you know, the Energy on Ice happening each evening. And then the last weekend, right before we get to Christmas, you've got Santa Sweets, which is a new one this year. Each of the different restaurants downtown are doing specialty desserts that night that they don't normally sell with a Christmas theme, and then you've got the Dancing Lights and things happening as well. Saturday, the 18th, we've done scavenger hunts at different times. I know the Parks Department's had a great time with their hams that they've had on display, and everybody's trying to find those. So keeping the theme of the 12 Days of Christmas, we will have each of the 12 days different decals for each of the 12 days hidden around downtown. And just look at our city Facebook page to get the information that morning. And if you go find each of those 12 and respond with us via social media, we've got some great prizes to give to folks that they can go find those 12 days. So, and then obviously, you've got the Dancing Lights every night and Energy on Ice every night. So there's some additional events that didn't fall on the weekends, you know, programming that Bluegrass and the River Park Center are doing. They've got some good shows on those dates as well to enjoy the holidays. So those are kind of outside of the 12 days, but again, thank you to the CVB folks, Mark and Dave and that crew over there to help us kind of piece some of these things together as well as the downtown businesses. So to get information on it, owensboro.org/Christmas. All the information's on the website. There's links to be able to get more detailed information about any of those individual events, but we're excited about it. That's a lot of activities, certainly not the city creating all of it. We're doing a handful of them, but there's a lot of different people that have been doing them, and we're just trying to highlight those. And again, thank you to our partners in the utility companies and Green River for making those, the ice rink and then the Dancing Lights possible this year too. So we're excited about adding some more festivities to downtown this Christmas. And happy to answer any questions about that before we get to the next one for the holidays.
Is that Hot Chocolate Hop, is that on a trolley or are you walking?
You can do both. Actually, Brew Bridge has got their trolley, but they've got our trolley, obviously will be running as well, and Brew Bridge has added theirs to it. So those will be running throughout the evening that night, or you could just hit a few that are close to each other, like, and there's one block, I think, along Second Street that's got four or five places that'll have it just in the one block, so you can enjoy both.
And for those that don't have good internet and understand how to do the links and all that stuff, how can we help them to know that it's going on?
Convention and Visitors Bureau is doing a big push with it. Again, it goes back to internet. A lot of it's on social media, but we've already talked to several of the news stations today. I got some more interviews we're doing this afternoon with the news stations. I know Messenger Inquire already talked to Keith Lawrence about it, so whether it's in newspaper or radio or print, they'll all hear about it. But to get the detailed information about it, you need to get online and go to our city webpage, has got all that information.
Okay. All right, next topic.
All right. Next, talked to City Manager and I talked to a few commissioners. We wanted to look at parking downtown, accessible parking, and kind of evaluate that from, I think more specifically, when we do some of the larger events, like the Barbecue Festival on July 4th, things like that, as opposed to generically. So we were looking at it from mainly that aspect of if you're going to a big attraction or a big, a larger event, do we have enough available parking? Where is it located? Is it accessible, not accessible? Could we do anything to improve what we do have? So we've, I'll give you, and looking at a few different kind of backgrounds and some other markets and what they do for different events. That's obviously a lot of kind of dots all over that map. It looks pretty busy, but that shows where we have accessible park designated handicap parking in our downtown. So on just the streets, we've got over 50 parking spaces between Third, Veteran, Second, and Third of designated parking. That does not include the parking in the two parking garages or the Convention Center and the Hampton Holiday Inn. So there's quite a few parking, you know, designated parking spaces in the downtown core. Obviously, people want to get as close as possible to the act, to the action. Obviously, if you have, you know, accessibility concerns, you don't want to park out on Fourth and Fifth. You know, we do Barbecue Festival, people are parking down by the police department, I think, on Ninth to be able to get there, and that's just not feasible for special needs. So we want to get them closer to that. So, you know, Third Street North gives you 90-plus spaces. If you're at Second Street North, you've got 50. And obviously, depending on what the event is, the majority of the events, veteran, the larger events, Veterans Boulevard would be closed, so you would lose about 10 spaces from those counts for July 4th or for the airshow. So you would lose a few of those, but again, those numbers don't include any guests at the hotels downtown or the Convention Center for anybody that's, you know, parking at those locations. So we looked at some other things. Obviously, airshow is something that we do, whether it's Hydro Fair or Airshow, you know, that we do in the fall. And we looked at other ones, talked to other communities to see what they did and evaluated their parking. Traditionally, the handicap parking is either at a separate specially-designated location or it's just up front, you know, near the general parking space. Typically, it's on paved lots, not always, but it's typically on a paved area to make that accessible, accessibility a little bit easier. Sometimes it's at a farther distance away, but then they offer a shuttle service to be able to, you know, minimize that travel distance, but there's very few of those that do that. Usually, though, with those larger events, you got to walk a pretty long distance once you get there. I know many of you have probably been to the state fair, or you've been to Thunder Over Louisville or things like that. So even once you, even if you go to Bridgestone Arena where the Predators play and went to a hockey game or a concert down there, you know, you got to park a pretty long way from one of the garages, or if you park close and have somebody drop you, it's still a pretty good distance, you know, to be able to find your seats and things like that. So, you know, we were trying to take a look at how far realistically, because some of those venues would say, oh, we have accessible parking, you know, right next to the flight line, our entrance, but traditionally, that's on an airfield. And as many of you have been out to the airshow, even if you park at the front terminal of our airport, you're still probably walking 500 or 600 feet to go, you know, walk around the planes out on the tarmac. So you can be close, but not really be close to the action of where you want to watch and see something. For the remote shows, which is what our airshow or Hydro Fair would be considered, meaning you're at a waterfront someplace, a lot of times you're parking farther away. You know, if you go to Fort Lauderdale, Florida, or Pensacola Beach for the Blue Angels Homecoming Show that they do, they just have general handicap parking that's in public parking facilities, and depending on what your angle is, you know, you choose how far you want to go to get your best viewing of the show per se. So that's kind of how, we talked to three or four different airshows, folks that we know in the industry, and that's how they analyze it. So I just pulled up a couple of maps just to give you an idea. This is one up in Duluth, or sorry, this is the Colorado one. And so it shows handicap parking and volunteer parking up close, but to get to the entrance, you got about 650 feet, and then even once you're on, you know, inside the gate, you got another 500 some odd feet to get to the preferred ticket area. If you go to the general ticketing area in the top left corner, there is just general, general admittance viewing area. So you're still going a little ways even if you're parking close. At the Duluth Airshow, similar, so I didn't highlight, probably should have highlighted, but in the bottom left corner, you see a light blue box, and that's their designated handicap parking. So it's separated from the rest because it's a paved parking lot compared to a grassy field. Then they offer shuttle service to be able to get up to that gate. Then once you get to the gate again, you got about 500 feet, and then you're inside the, you know, security area of the TSA security area, but then you got another 800-plus feet to get to the, you know, the viewing areas if you've purchased tickets for those. So certainly not ideal, but it is what it is when you go to an event of that nature, at least in those venues. Then we looked at a few other things, you know, attractions. I mentioned Bridgestone Arena. We looked at Fourth Street Live. We looked at Newport on the Levy. We looked at Thunder Over Louisville, things like that. And so either, again, designated places just in surface lots throughout the community. Sometimes they have street parking like we do. I think our downtown has more than any of the others as far as street parking because literally every block, the corner of every block's got handicap parking available. So to give you an idea of those, this is Fourth Street Live. It's an aerial map, so I don't know if you, everybody can kind of recognize it, but Fourth Street Live, the yellow box there in the middle runs north and south. And so there's, you know, surface street parking around the corner where the accessible parking is in the corner of the lot, so it's close to the entrance, but you got a little bit of a hall to be able to get around to the main drag there through Fourth Street, whether you're going to Guy Fieri's Place or whatever restaurant that you want to go to. Thunder Over Louisville, a lot of people like Thunder Over Louisville with their fireworks and things like that. They don't allow any street parking north of Main Street, which is the red line there through the middle of downtown. So essentially, that whole yellow shaded area, unless you're at one of the hotels that you're already a guest at, you can't utilize street parking there. that you're already a guest at, you can't utilize street parking there. So you've got a pretty good walk, you know, in downtown Louisville if you want to get to the riverfront to enjoy Thunder Over Louisville. So in comparison, what we have downtown with ours, if you parked in the new Locust Street Garage and you came out the corner of the garage there, you've got about 450 feet to get to McConnell Plaza. If you utilize the Davis Street Garage, you've only got just under 300 feet to get to, again, depending on where you want to watch it, obviously you'd have a farther distance if you want to get down by the fountains or something like that. But both of those garages are open and accessible for our July 4th, for our airshow. For BBQ Festival, both of those garages are available. The one I know in reference to BBQ Fest is even more challenging because of Second Street being closed, so you lose some additional spaces along Second Street. So as we look at it, for the larger events that we do, whether it's the Great Race that came one time, or Fourth of July, or something like that, our options are, could we offer a shuttle service from a remote location outside of downtown and have them bring it in? The folks that we talk to about that, special needs groups here in town, and then some of the other facilities that do airshows or do state fairs, don't like the shuttling option. They don't think it's utilized greatly. They said for the masses, sometimes you have to do it, but for accessible needs, it's really problematic and they see very few people use it because of the fact of you can't accommodate more than typically a single wheelchair on the trolley or on the shuttle van. And those with walkers and canes or scooters just can't utilize them nearly as effectively. We could provide additional parking spaces downtown specifically marked as handicap parking only. So an option would be along Second Street or along Third Street, depending on the event. If we designate, like we do no parking signs, we could designate just specific handicap parking only on certain blocks. And then we would have to work with police department, I guess, for enforcement of that to make sure that indeed it's being utilized, but the people were intending it to be utilized for. Or we could just simply do a designated drop-off or pickup lane only, like other events do, again, referencing whether it's Rupp Arena or the Yum Center or Bridgestone Arena. You know, if you go to one of the basketball games, you can typically drive up to a drop-off lane right in front and drop off, and then your companion then goes and parks the car and comes back and meets you. So you can have close access. But if you're, I'm trying to think, you know, if it's two seniors that, and neither one wants to walk by themselves or walk a long distance, then that's problematic too. So I don't think there's a great solution that solves it all for everybody, but that's kind of our analysis in looking at different types of events, different locations, how do they do it and how do we do? So I think overall, you know, based on this, we do a pretty good job compared to most venues that we go to. Not to say that we couldn't improve and we'd certainly be happy to look at some other options if the commission wanted to explore something like a drop-off lane or designating some additional, you know, handicap marked spaces. That's certainly something we can look at for those bigger events in the future moving forward.
Commissioner Glenn?
So let's look at the second option. So the second option says designate additional parking spaces. So that's what I'm wondering, but not on a permanent basis. Is there a way to do it on a temporary basis for a big event like the airshow or the Hydro Plane Fair, you know, that kind of thing? Is there a way, like we'd have signs, we'd flip them down and make a block that's handicap parking that's close to the Convention Center, and then you flip those back up or lock them into place? And then those spaces go back to their normal designation for the non-event times?
Yeah, potentially, we could look at that. And we talked about it internally to say, you know, potentially we take, for instance, just as example, take the block right in front of the Hampton Inn Hotel and the parking on the north side of Second Street. There's, I think, nine or 10 parking spaces in that one block right in front of the Convention Center. Again, you've got about nine or 10 spaces in front of that. So you could take the north side of the street. And whether, my initial thought wouldn't be to put up any type of permanent signage with flipping it, because I think what we're discussing is kind of revolving around two or three event, the big, the biggest events during the season. So we'd probably come up with some sort of temporary signage to put on those, just like we do no parking signs when we're reserving spaces for vendors or for staff, that we could basically, you know, mark those spaces. And that would open up additional spaces that are, you know, within a city block at least of the riverfront itself.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Castlin?
One thing I want to thank you, Tim, for all your work. It's obvious you've put a lot of work into this. Kind of like Bob was saying, you know, another thing would be to just make the, possibly the bottom floor on the parking garage for handicap only, you know, during a big event. And that would be right next to the park and, you know, be easy for people to locate also.
Sure. And it's, that's one of the things honestly we looked at and we would need to look at a little bit more as far as ADA goes because of that parking garage, the spaces in the Davis Street Garage specifically are pretty tight. Even if you drive a, you know, a Yukon or a Silverado or, you know, an Escalade or something, you know, all that big SUVs folks have, it's a pretty tight squeeze to get a Tahoe even in and out of those spaces. So we need to look at the ADA compliance issue with that of having those, whereas at least if you have the street parking, tough to get in and out of some of them, but you've got a designated side that you're not into traffic or into another vehicle to be able to load and unload on the curb, you know, on the sidewalk. So that was our thought there, but certainly something we would look at.
Well, thank you, Tim. I think you did a lot of work on it, but I don't think you really understand what we're trying to do. And when you said that you've talked to a few people that don't like the shuttle idea, you know, you, we could access those grits buses that have, you know, have a ramp to drop down, put it, you know, because it's fine to justify all our parking spaces in relationship to all these other cities, but it's about moving from that parking plot spot when you finally get a parking in a spot. That's the issue. It's not that we don't have enough spots, it's getting the people from that spot to the activity. And that's where I think the concentration of this issue should be. And whether or not the people you talk to don't, won't utilize the vans or whatever you were talking about, trolleys or whatever, I don't, I'm sure that that's true, but it's still, it's movement after they've actually found a place to park. And I know about the old parking garage's got a tough ramp in there, it's tough walking down that. But if you look at this from a mobility issue, from where you end up to where you need to go, and ours is 550 feet and 850 feet, well, if you, I can speak to some of that. It's more difficult than we're doing the best we can. And I'm not saying you're saying that, but I'm still looking at a way to move people from a stationary point due to some kind of mobility issue to where the action is. And that's where I think our concentration should be. All this information is good and obviously we've got all these little blue dots on that map and that's fine, but it's still, it's still a mobility issue, not a parking issue is the way I see it. So I just share that, my thoughts with it from whatever it's worth.
Sure. We'd love to discuss it more to understand it, because obviously the events that we do downtown, obviously are spread out quite a bit. We realize that, you know, if you go to...
Sure. And I know that's obviously a problem, because, you know, or else it would already have been solved, but, you know, I think we should make the thought process of mobility versus just parking. I mean, like I said, you stick most of those cars in the parking garage and utilize them, but still there's an amount of mobility that needs to be considered in this thought process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? City Manager, you gonna, you don't have any problem with mobility, do you? You're the runner.
No, I don't. So it would seem like, if I'm understanding your comments here at the end, that his, Tim, go back to the slide, if you would, the last slide. So does that last, or that third comment or recommendation address that? Because if it's, if it's more of a drop-off, even if they can't park there, if it's about, if you're saying it's about accessibility after parking, if they could be dropped off closer to the action, is that more what you're speaking to?
Yeah, but if you've got the roads blocked, you've got to figure out how to get them to that spot, you know. And granted, we only do that five, seven times a year or something, whatever you said the other day when we talked.
Sure, yeah.
You know, that's, that's, that's better, rather than park in front of the Holiday Inn or whatever it is and then try and get down to where the action is. I just think it's a mobility issue. The, you know, I still believe that a shuttle could be an answer. I even talked to the people at the, I think I told you maybe this, the park over there in Indiana where the Flash and Safari and all that is, what's that called?
Holiday World.
You know, they have a little, they have a little train, you know, they pick you up out in the parking lot and bring you to the action. You actually park 800 to 1,000 feet away and then they get the people up to the action. So that's the thought I have, and it may not be feasible, but that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking about is, you know, you open up a certain amount or have somebody manning the, you know, those barricades to get them down there and get them out and then pick them back up. So it may be a logistical nightmare, but that's still the thought I have is getting them from where, and the drop-off lane is certainly one thing. That's kind of scares me a little bit because these people climbing out of the backseat of a car or Yukon and they got a walker or a wheelchair and somebody's impatient and they want to swing around them. So I know there's always issues like that, but I just think, you know, you don't have to spend the rest of your life trying to figure it out. But I still think it's more of a mobility issue, once the people find a place to put their vehicle.
And what Nate was saying, you know, we've talked about that with that drop lane, anytime you do anything, street parking makes me nervous because I've got little kids, right? And the kids get out of the, you know, just people get out of both sides of it. But yet, to get people as close as possible to, let's say, the action per se. So at BBQ Fest, you know, how can we get mobility as close as possible to basically in front of the courthouse, right? That's the center of the BBQ Festival traditionally is by those. But yet functionally, to take any vehicle through, like down north on Frederica Street or down Second Street is just a safety concern because of how thick, A, the crowd is and B, the vendors and the barbecue folks are. But could we designate the lane along Third Street next to the courthouse as that drop-off? So I guess my perspective would be then we're getting them as close as possible to that. You know, they've got to walk down the side of the courthouse lawn or down the sidewalk, you know, behind those teams, but at least they're within 300 or 400 feet of kind of the middle of that action. You know, I know the reference to Holiday World, certainly those parking lots are huge and just like Disney does, right? And if you go to Universal Studios, they've got escalators that get you close. But then once you get to the entrance, you still have a distance to go to kind of get in the middle of it, right? But certainly happy to continue the conversation and see if we can improve it anyway, we'd certainly like to do that.
Okay, thank you. One other, are you gonna, are we gonna talk about the Christmas parade while you're here or is that somebody else?
Happy to, if you'd like to.
Yeah, go ahead. I actually thought it might come up under the holiday events item, so...
I did too, but is it too late to talk about that?
No, we can talk about it.
I just have one thing I want to tell you.
Sure.
Francine with Friday After Five says she'd be glad to take that thing over or participate in trying to make it work. So there's, there's a volunteer, that's got a lot of volunteers, and it might be something worth kind of marrying, is it Mr. Williams, isn't he the chair of the parade committee? But she's volunteered, she called me and said, I want to do this, let me help you. So that might be a thought as we move forward.
Yeah, we've got, so we, since the, which we didn't know they were doing, but since the parade committee announced that they canceled it, we've had obviously a few more conversations with them since that time. And, you know, a myriad of reasons of why that they, you know, announced publicly of why they decided just not to do it this time. And so in the meantime, while we were in those conversations, there was another that called us, or another individual that called us, and they posted some stuff on social media, small business owners that were interested in creating their own parade this year, and this year only, just to kind of fill that gap that the bigger parade wasn't able to do. And so we've talked them through the process of how to do a parade, what does it take, how do we permit it? You know, the city, and I know we had said this publicly before, but the city does provide a lot of support to that Christmas parade group, probably, you know, more than 100 man hours at least on the low end. And that's just for the day of the event, between all the police services that are out there and all the public works, closing the roads and doing, so there's a lot that we provide that group. So I don't want it to think that we're not supporting them, and we've been doing that for a very long time. And there's, there's traditionally not a cost to them for that because of how long they've been doing it. They've been bringing that festive tradition here for decades and decades and decades. And so we recognize that. But we certainly want to be sensitive to that as well and not try to take over, step on toes with something that that group's done and fully plans to bring back and do like they always do next year. So that being said, we've talked to this other group several times and they're supposed to circle back later this week and let us know, hey, we think we can piece this together and here's the dates we want to do it. And so we've given them some guidance about how to do it because they've never done a parade before. Most people, even though they've got great intentions, have never done a parade. And they don't know about how to marshal it and set it up and how to do disbanding and how to monitor for safety and all the insurance and portage jaws, and there's a lot that goes into it. And so we've certainly offered our office services about our expertise to be able to do something like that in a safe manner. So we're waiting to hear back from them, but I know that they've got a group of small business owners that were interested in creating something. It wouldn't be the same date, but they would do it sometime in December, you know, certainly before, before Christmas. So they've got the idea there and we're going to wait to hear back from them and see if we can help support them to make this, this new version at least for this year to happen before it returns in its traditional form next year.
It takes a while to build a flow.
It does. It does.
But really Francine, France, she will help. If you want to contact her, I can, you know how to get hold of her.
Yep, we know Fran.
Okay, and you know, and all those parade people, you know, they could have, last Saturday, we had the veterans parade and, you know, and it was attended by some very gracious people, but we could have had a whole lot more people down there for that if they really wanted to be in the parade and watch the parade, because there were, it was a very nice event.